Good evening, everyone. All our staff, your dedicated staff, thank you so much. As President of the Eau Claire School Board, I respectfully call this meeting to order. Thank you to the Board and many staff members who are here tonight to attend this meeting. I want to thank also Chippewa Valley Community Television and those that are watching through that medium, and thank you to them for us to have that opportunity on the web. The Board meetings are broadcast on Channel 994, which is right next to the Wisconsin Eye Channel, so if you ever want to watch Board meetings and the state legislature, they're right next to each other. So, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, are we in compliance with the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you, Patty. And would you roll call, please, for quorum?
Commissioner Dux.
Present.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Harder is absent. Commissioner Luganville.
Here.
Commissioner Vu.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
And Commissioner Bika, absent. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. We usually provide opportunity at the beginning of the Board meeting for our 30-minute time period for citizens to address the Board, but I do not think we have anyone signed up this evening. So that will take us right on to the Board and Administrative Reports to Superintendent Hardabek's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This time, I'd like to update the Board on the upcoming Board of Education events. On August 23rd, we will have a Listening Session for the Boundary Changes at North High School, IMCA, and that will begin at 6:30 PM. On August 28th, at noon, there will be the opening of Schools All Staff Meeting at Memorial, and all of you are invited to attend and to address the group for greeting. On August 28th, in the evening, at 6:30 PM, there is a Listening Session for the Boundary Changes at Lake Shore Elementary School. And that will begin, and I said, I think I said that will begin at 6:30 PM. And then, August 31st, at 8:45, in the Administration Building, there's an orientation for our two new Board members, Lori Bika and Dr. Eric Torres. On September 5th is the first day of school for students, and we have a change in date on the Board meeting. It will now be held on September 11th, and that will take place at 7:00 PM. And earlier in the morning of that date, at 8:45 AM here in the Administration Building, there will be a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee. So, very busy times to our next Board meeting. I wanted to update all of the Board. Today, we had our welcome to new staff, and we began four days of induction training for our new employees. We greeted 75 new employees this morning. Chris Hambach-Boyle, Joe Luganville, and Dr. Torres were here in the morning to greet our new members, and then Catherine Dux was with us at lunch to greet the new employees. So, lots going on. Last week, the mentors were busy planning their activities with their new mentees, and they met with them this morning also. And so, we're off to a great start and exciting new school year.
Thank you, Dr. Hardabek. Next is my report. I don't have much, except I want everyone to know that I'm going to be out of town working, so I'm going to miss the DeLong Listening Session, so Catherine's going to facilitate and moderate that one for me. So, at North, I mean, what did I say?
DeLong.
Yeah, we did DeLong, at North, which is on August 23rd, which is on Wednesday, right? Yep. Also, I, Marianne and I are setting up a September 1st date with John Murphy to do a Newsmaker segment again, so we're working on that. And then, we just had a conversation tonight for Board members to attend the October 24th Regional Meeting of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and we're hoping to get our entire Board at that meeting. And that concludes my report. So, I'm going to take it then on to other reports, School Board Committee reports. Do we have any for tonight? Seeing none, that takes us to our Legislative Update. Do we have one for tonight, Joe?
I'll just...
And by the way, can I comment? Thanks for the Legislative Presence on the website.
Oh, yeah.
So, people can go there and see that, too. So, go ahead.
Yeah, that's all I was going to say.
Okay.
People can go to ECASD.us/advocacy, and you'll get an update every time I send something new to the website. The newest is that we do know that the Joint Finance Committee plans to take up K-12 education budget items during the week of August 28th, so stay tuned.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to our Consent Resolution Agenda. Board, you can pull anything that you need clarification or have questions about. So, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August 7th, 2017. The 2016-17 Budget Adjustments. Gifts in the amount of $18,799.65 for the period of July 1st, 2017, through July 31st, 2017, and supplemental gifts in the amount of $48,978.60 for the period of July 1st, 2016, through June, July, June, July 1st, 2016, through June 30th, 2017. Payment of all bills in the amount of $9,902,662.84, and net payroll in the amount of $3,166,610.22 for the period of July 1st, 2017, through July 31st, 2017, and the Human Resources Employment Report. I entertain a motion. I approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Vu. Can we take a roll call vote? Patty, please.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
And with the passing of our Human Resources Employment Report, I turn it back over to Dr. Hardabek.
Thank you. So with your approval of the Employment Report tonight, you also approved the appointment of Eric Gonya to join South Middle School as their new Assistant Principal. Eric, would you stand up, please? So Eric joined the Eau Claire Area School District in 1998, and throughout his career in the district, he's taught 4th and 5th Grade at Little Red and Mann's Elementary Schools, and 6th Grade at South Middle School, so be going back to South. Eric was most recent, has most recently served as a teacher on special assignment at DeLong Middle School, and he earned his Bachelor's from UW Eau Claire, his Master's from UW La Crosse, and has an Educational Leadership Degree from Vortebor University. Eric is licensed through the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction as a principal, and is also licensed to teach elementary education to grades 1 through 8. So Eric, we're looking forward to your good work at South, and we think you'll be a great addition there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hardabek. Oh, do you have more? Oh, sorry, she has more.
So I have one more announcement. And with your approval of the Budget Adjustment tonight, Jim Schmidt has an update for you about our fiber project.
Thank you. The project has been a multi, I mean, nearly a decade-long project in a partnership with CINC, the Chippewa Valley Inter-Networking Consortium. It's mostly comprised of nonprofits in the area and governmental agencies such as the City, the County, Mayo, Sacred Heart, and so forth. The last project, to give you an idea of how this has been funded, is primarily through E-Rate funding. So, the amount that was approved was $204,445. The actual bill was $540,000, which meant $335,555, or 62% of that was waived due to E-Rate. If you ever look at your phone bill, there's a small little bit on the bottom of, that is for E-Rate funding to help pay for work like this with schools. And so, starting as of last Friday, the entire district's fiber operation was solely owned and run through the CINC Consortium. We are using charter on a month-to-month lease, tentatively, for just a few more weeks, just to make sure that it's stable, but we are also running, so we're running on our own fiber now 100%. We expect a return of investment in about three and a half years. And the speed of that is 10 GB versus 1 GB. So we've got a lot of speed for a lot of capacity for learning, which is going to be a great service to all of our students at eventually a cost in the end that will be, will be coming back to us instead of having to pay bills for our charter lease. So it's really a great project. And James Martin was the final person to help see that project to its finish, so we're very happy with where it landed.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. I walk in schools all the time where they all have to turn off their phones, and they have cones in the hallways so that you can't turn on, so they can do their testing. So with the additionals, we are in better stead than that, right? Thank you. Okay. That takes us on to, any questions from the Board? That takes us on to our individual Considered Resolutions. We have one. When we initially voted at our meeting in June, we voted to accept the demographic and trends of Facility Planning Committee's recommendation, so that all students living north and west of the Chippewa and Eau Claire Rivers attend North, and all the students living south and east of the Chippewa and Eau Claire Rivers will attend Memorial. We thought at that time, given our thought process as a Board, that we would complete our community Listening Sessions and vote at that first meeting in September, but I'd like to have the Board entertain the idea of giving us a little more time to take the data from the Listening Sessions, and information from the Listening Sessions, and move that vote from the first meeting in September to the second meeting, which would be September 25th, 2017. In that way, the Board, we can have a Committee Report on September 11 to discuss the feedback and then vote on the 25th. And, Marianne, do you want to add anything to that?
I would just echo what you said, that when the timeline was first determined, we thought we would be able to wrap the Listening Sessions up faster than we did, but because of vacation schedules and wanting to have a certain number of Board members present at each Listening Session, we had to stretch it out to next week. So this will give the Board time to digest the information that comes back from the Listening Sessions.
So I need a, I need a motion from the Board?
I have a question.
Sorry. Commissioner Dux.
Yeah. Are we planning to hear a proposal for transition at that time, on the 25th?
I think that we will have a plan on the 11th for us to vote on, on the 25th. We may have more discussion on the 25th, but I'm hoping we can vote on the 25th. That makes it?
I can make the motion if you want. Just, I move that we move the transition vote to September 25th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Torres. Can all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay. That carries. The next thing we will go to are Committee Reports and Items for Discussion. The audience also has an opportunity, after each one of these segments, to address the Board. So the first one is 8.2 Staff Engagement Survey, and I think that's Jimmy's jumping to get out of his seat there. Thanks, Jim.
I was trying to remember if we were reading a policy first. Did I have it up? All right. Good evening. All right, this is the last of the three, right? We did Students two meetings ago, we did Family the last meeting, so now we're on to the last one, which is our Staff Engagement Survey. So the Staff Survey was open from April 19th to May 23rd, so just over a month. We invite staff to take it through a variety of means. We have it in the, well, they get a direct email for themselves, so that that's their link and their opportunity to join the survey, but we invite them through the District Update, and then they get an individual letter as well. And it's pretty exciting, because when we first did the survey five years, or four and a half or five years ago, it was, we got about a 59% response rate. We're up to 71 now, which is real good. And when we look at some of the benchmarking data, we are getting a better response than most schools. So we're, we're pretty excited, because I, we think our employees take it seriously. They want to weigh in, and having 71% or nearly, or just over two-thirds or close to three-quarters of our staff taking it as, we see as a positive. We do a pattern, and we've done this, so this is, the first year we did the survey, and then we followed up with focus groups, and then we repeated again the next year with a survey, and then the next year with focus groups. And so last year was a survey, so this year is going to be focus groups, so we just do that every year. So we do something with our staff every year, but last year was a survey, so then this year is the focus group, and the focus group gives us a chance to dig in a little bit deeper on the things we're about to learn. It also is an opportunity, as you learned, as you listened today, if there's something that you want to try to get on the radar of the focus group conversation, this is a good chance for that to happen as well. The format should look the same, we're kind of tweaking that format with K-12 Insight to give you a look that isn't overbearing, but at the same time gives you some level of detail, so let's get started. Like the last presentation we did, we want to really focus around the Strategic Plan Priority Areas, and this one really focuses primarily on the Collaborative Cultures and High Quality Staff, and there's a bit about partnerships that we'll talk about in a moment. So you'll see a little bit difference in terms of the focus from the other surveys with this one, it kind of goes towards our latter part of the, of the Strategic Plan. So you can see, like, why we measure engagement, and really, there are several factors that influence engagement and that ability to be a high-functioning and successful school district. And, you know, you see things, including relationships with supervisors and administrators, colleagues, students and parents, relationships in terms of the physical environment, safety, policy considerations and implementation, support for professional development and growth, preparation, and a general satisfaction also, just about choice of career, right? So while it seems like it's particularly about the Eau Claire School District, some of it is talking about why I, you know, the career I chose and my, the path that I'm going down as a, as an employee. So, it's good for us to take a step back, like we've done in the last surveys, and kind of look at how we have gotten here. So, the, one of the things that we've done the past few years is really try to keep track of the past surveys and the work that's been done, and how that leads to this survey and its development, and then the focus groups. So we think of this as a long journey that has this ebb and flow to it in terms of focus groups and surveys. You know, the first, the first time we did the survey, it was real clear that staff felt that they had, were being asked to collaborate, but we really didn't have time to collaborate, and I can't remember who was it that talked today with the new teachers? I think it was Kate, when she was in the IMC, saying, "But we now have a schedule that supports that within their working day," and specifically speaks to that in terms of the expectations we provide time. So that came from one of the earlier surveys and focus groups. We also kept hearing that we were losing staff due to compensation. We had a salary schedule that was frozen. It really wasn't able to be supported without, in some sort of adjustment, and obviously over the last year and a half, that was the work that you did on that, but that was, we heard that quite a bit from the early surveys as well. We also heard from teachers saying they didn't have an input into addressing working conditions at sites, so the Building Improvement Committees, or known as BIC Committees, were tweaked to allow for that input on day-to-day operations, everything from how target time is scheduled in the elementary school, to bus schedules, copier cleanup, you name it. I mean, if it can be a topic in a school, you can bring it to BIC. We restructured Mean Confer to be more proactive, to try to address concerns for teachers might have regarding district initiatives and give that input, and that's a monthly meeting, so we start that, I believe, in a couple weeks again. We established that process of recognizing employee achievement at the Board meetings. So this was a little bit different meeting. We didn't, typically, we have someone standing up and, and being recognized for that, so we've been, that came out of that earlier surveying about being recognized as an employee. Working with the Foundation, the Golden Apple Award was another opportunity for us to develop a systemic recognition program, and obviously, that program has been tweaked as well, because I think we moved the time of year last year to, so that's one that continues to be, based on the feedback from staff, continues to be revised as well. The, the earlier surveys also indicated that we had a need for overall improvement of the systems, and that led to a district-level systems assessment, which led to the reorganization of teaching and learning, led to the development of a Communications Committee, which you'll be hearing in the next report. We also had developed from this a school improvement process, and there's an expectation from Dr. Hardabek with every principal, that every staff at some level of the development of an annual student, school improvement plan, has some ability to have input on this. So each building will have leadership teams meet, but they at some point will address this as an entire building, and so, so staff at least feel they have a voice in the development of the school improvement plan, which drives a lot of their work in the building. There was also the implementation of having an effective feedback model and really focusing on, from this, that the educator effectiveness, when we brought that in, was really focusing around growth versus scores. And so that was part of the feedback we got through an earlier survey and focus group. And finally, the Strategic Plan, you know, the feedback from focus groups helped inform us in the Strategic Plan. So the Strategic Plan didn't come out of these surveys, but it really did help inform our work as we started working on that over a year ago, and adopting it a year ago back in February. So, there are several different categories, and just like last, the last survey, when I mentioned, we're trying to, we're kind of retrofitting a bit in, in terms of the survey categories and trying to make them work within the Strategic Plan. And as we revise the Staff Engagement Survey for next year, we're going to be even more proactive in terms of saying, we want to make sure we address the Strategic Plan priorities, but we took the existing ones and really identified, we have about five of these that fit under three, under Collaborative Cultures, three of them fit under High Quality Staff, four, a couple overlap, and then we actually have one in general about Area 5, which we'll show you at the end. So, we'll start again with the big picture, and then we'll dig into the numbers. So, the themes come out of a couple different sources. One is from the actual Likert Scale responses and some things that bubble up, and the second is that there are some open-ended questions. We, again, do, just like the Family Survey and the Student Survey, we don't see those as a district. That's one of the things that the vendor, K-12 Insight, is in charge of, is taking that and looking for broader themes that they can then bring back to the table for us. So, we have a few strengths that were, and by the way, the SP is Strategic Plan 3.1, so it's Priority, Priority Area 3, and then there's that first bullet underneath it. So, that's what the coding means up there. So first of all, the things that they, that were either represented in the Likert Scale responses or in the, or in the open-ended responses is, first of all, this is kind of exciting, we have engaged staff. I mean, they really are engaged in their work. This is very much a strength of our district. Again, if I can summarize the three surveys in one word, it's relationships, and I believe our staff is, and our students and families are highly engaged in the work because of the strong relationships that we have. The, our staff like the work site where they're assigned. They definitely have a strong sense of community where they are. They find their coworkers and supervisors as being dedicated, and that they feel that they are trusted to make good decisions from their supervisor, and that they have a level of independence for work. If we think about the things that motivate people, having some level of autonomy is, is a very motivating factor. And finally, and as, this should excite all of us sitting around the table, they are very familiar with our mission and vision. The work you've done has clearly resonated with our staff. They, they're aware of it and, and how they support it. So some areas for growth that, that have been identified, there's a question of the new salary structure and whether newer employees to the district should be paid as much as veteran employees. The key word is not newer employees, it's newer employees to the district. So, there's some question on that. They wrote that they do not feel like they're adequately compensated when they take on extra responsibilities, so that idea when someone has to step up to make sure that there's an appropriate compensation. They want principals to be consistent, the way on Wednesday, professional development is being delivered in all buildings. So they see some inconsistencies, and we've heard that as well, and those are some things, actually, that we are working on even at this time. They want more training in technology behavior management. The second piece, behavior management, I've talked with a few different groups in the state, is not unique to Eau Claire. It's a, it's a challenge. There's some behaviors and, and the, and the rules we have to follow to make sure that we protect student safety at the same time as, as addressing student behavior. So we're not, this is not a unique Eau Claire item. And then they express a need for additional mental health and special education supports for students. Yes?
Commissioner Dux has a question.
Yeah. Well, when you're talking about behavior management, is that PBIS?
It's PBIS, and also, there are just some disruptive behaviors, so some of the parts where you can't put your hands on a child, and so what are the appropriate skills and strategies that you can do to de-escalate? Nonviolent crisis intervention's part of that, but then there's some other skills, I think, that people feel like would be helpful in their toolbox that we need to better support. So we think about this as a whole continuum of behavioral supports.
Commissioner Luganville?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I do. Bullet 2, does, do, does the Administration read that as potentially commenting on the increment system in the district?
I think that is, and I think multiple different things, but increment could be one. Mother could just be if someone is doing something as a leader in their building and not having a model maybe built within the increment system, and I'm glad you brought that up, because there is an increment study happening this year to hopefully address some of those concerns.
That was my question.
Absolutely.
That's what the, okay.
Yep, so Kate Marx is leading that this year.
Okay.
And that's sitting with the Budget Committee? Commissioner Dux?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
You bet. And finally, I'm wanting more opportunities to collaborate with colleagues outside their building or department, and this is, we've heard this as well, and so we've worked with principals on developing some, through the PDIP Days, some cross-district opportunities for staff to do that. And there are already some opportunities that exist in the summer, but not as many during the school year, so I'm trying to make sure that those are done in a meaningful way and supportive. So, overall engagement, so we've got three different colors up here to kind of walk us through. The first is the overall, and this is our, this is a percent of either highly engaged or engaged employees, so I give you three different numbers. One is our survey, 80%, kind of hits that benchmark again, where we try to at least get everyone to 80%. The national benchmark was a benchmark done with K-12 Insight from some districts, so we're, we're a little bit above the national benchmarking that they've done, using a very similar tool to our tool. And then finally, the National Gallup Poll for organizations with, that we follow within the range. So there's, they do an overall engagement for organizations under 1,000, employees 1,000 to 5,000. We fit in that group, so the, that's not specific to education, that's just specific to employees in general. So we looked, we're continuing to look, and we will look for like an education-specific one from Gallup. We haven't been able to find that yet, but in general, you can see that educators, obviously, are a little more highly engaged than other areas, but, and we are, as a district at least, this tells you we're in, we're in range of, of other districts, but just a little bit above. So digging in a little bit deeper, under, last time I had some vertical bars, this time we're going horizontal, so these are five different categories under Strategic Plan, Area 3, the Collaborative Cultures. So you can see the colors. We walk from, when, when, there's a bank of questions that are either strongly agree, agree, neither agree or disagree, disagree, or strongly agree. So we are, we are, the more of these two is good. This is no man's land a little bit, and, and we're, we're going to work a little bit to try to see if we can do something. We may not even offer this question next year or this option, just because it's an unknown factor, and we really don't know where that group lies. But what we've been focusing on a lot right now is this area, and trying to keep this as small as possible. And so, in terms of working relationships, to give you an example, well, first of all, participants, you know, there, as you can see down below, this is the Likert Scale that they, that they use. And overall, we do see in general a small number of disagrees and agrees. So for example, on working relationships, the highest number of this and lowest in this area was, for example, working relationships was, "I feel I have a coworker or someone else at work who cares about me as a person." Again, back to relationships. The area that scores the lowest in this one for working relationships is, "My principal or direct supervisor resolves conflicts that arise between staff members in a professional manner." And I say this because the lowest, whenever I do that, remember, there's always got to be, someone's got to be the high, someone's got to be low. So in general, we're scoring really well as a district, it's just, there's always a top and a bottom. Shared values, strong, in the strong area in this, and you can see only 8% on the negative, but a lot of very positive numbers here. I'm familiar with the mission and vision, a strategic plan, I know how to support the strategic plan in the school district. And the lower one is, "I feel comfortable sharing ideas and opinions with my principal or direct supervisor." So that one's, that's the lower end of this. For a work environment, to give you an idea of the type of question there, our stronger one is, "I have su... For a work environment, to give you an idea of the type of question there, our stronger one is I have sufficient independence in my work. We heard that earlier. And the challenge one we have is I have enough time to complete my work. You know, the feeling that there's not enough time, heck, also has an impact on me, on morale as well. So I don't feel like I have enough time to take care of that. Yes.
Commissioner Logan Bill? Just curious, you mentioned the sample question on working relationships. Uh, you know, does somebody care about you where you work?
Yeah.
And there are people, and it's only 3%, but who say, no one cares about me at my job. So with those individuals, if it's an online platform that they're doing the survey on, is there a way with that, if that's the answer that we get, that we can put up a, a, but, a screen for the EAP or something? Because it seems like those are people that we should be doing something. I mean, if you truly feel that not a single person cares for you at your job.
So this is a fine line, because of course we promise confidentiality, right?
Right.
And so I know when we've had, um, I know on the student end, when we've had a student really, through both written and choices, you know, really, we've only had it happen, I think, maybe once, possibly twice, where a student really had that type of, you know, very extreme. We were made aware that, like, they wanted to make sure that somehow that we were able to do some support, but that was only at the student level. We've never actually had that with an adult. And it's a tough line. I'm not sure if you want to speak to this or not, Dr. Hardbeck, but that's that part about confidentiality. We really, you know, part of the process here is that they'd know that we don't get to see names, so.
So I, I think that's a good explanation. You know, when we first began to survey staff, and Mark, you, you may remember this, there was quite a bit of concern about the feedback and how that feedback would be treated. And could people say what they really thought and not have a comeback to haunt them? So I think we have to continue to respect that confidentiality. But I think when we have a response like this, it's kind of an alert to all of us to kind of keep our eyes open to employees that might be feeling disaffected or not having relationships, and it certainly is a concern, even if it's just 3%.
I'd like to make a comment too. I know with mentor program and also the strength of the relationship between colleagues, that came out as a strength. So there's a pathway there for us to keep our, you know, to keep someone, an eye on someone if they need that kind of help, and then maybe bridge that with administration. I, I hope that that's the pathway, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Commissioner Vu?
Maybe this is just clarification or maybe suggestion too. So we have a percentage, but I'm hoping that those, um, area of concern is brought to the state, the, the staff engagement themes where it's this area for growth. So when you focus on the growth, then indirectly you fix the negative. And then a year from now, when you evaluate again, you look to see where the area of growth has been up or down.
So typically, and I'm glad you brought that up, typically when you, when we would do a review of this survey, we have sitting next to it the last focus group report, right before that, and then the survey before that. So we look at these things and continue about what's the impact, and then how internally can we better support our staff and our students, and, you know, depending on the survey. So I, I think we were saying the same thing, but yeah.
I was going to comment on that too, that, um, it's nice they're connected. And that it isn't one and then another, that they're connected and that you specifically let us know that. Thank you.
And, and one thing to keep in mind is the year that we do the survey is kind of a check-in to see how are we doing based on previous survey that was two years ago. But it's also a way for us to look and see, are there some areas that need some attention? And when we go into the focus groups, really probing to say, what did you mean by what you said or what you indicated in the survey? Or what do you think this means? Because we'll have a representative sampling from each employee group in the focus groups. So it really is an opportunity for us to kind of follow up. And so we're always about 18 months behind in addressing the survey because it takes a little time to figure out, um, what this particular survey means. So when you think of some of the initiatives that we've had, like the calendar, the compensation study, the systems assessment, all of those things took a little time to put together because we had to figure out what employees were really looking for.
Anything else? We're good? Okay. So the last two, leadership and communication, to give you just a little sampling there. One of the stronger areas under leadership was my principal or direct supervisor, trust me to make good decisions. We heard that earlier on, one of those strengths. One of the lower scores was my principal or direct supervisor holds staff members accountable. So that idea of, of following up on, on, um, when they perceive a staff not doing some of the work they're supposed to do. Under communication, um, strong area in there is my principal or direct supervisor is willing to listen to new ideas. And then challenges, I can influence decisions at my school or department. So it's interesting because you'll hear things like, at the very beginning, we had the BIC committees, the, the building improvement, and yet this one scored a little bit lower. So sometimes some of the things that we're trying still score a little bit lower, so we still have some more work to do. Probably to make sure that people either see that, that, um, that something is happening with that feedback in there, in that group when they're meeting with BIC. So, um, and some of these things, as Dr. Hardbeck mentioned, they take a while to develop and really get rolling in a strong way, so. Because a BIC is something that is in a different era. That's not something that, it had a different look in a prior era in our schools. So under our high-quality staff, um, three major areas here. One was general engagement items. And again, score lower down here, we're under 10%, which is good. You can see this gets a little bit higher down here. Some of the ideas are the strongest area, which we mentioned earlier, I'm engaged in my work. And it's something that scored lower was I see professional growth and long-term career, career opportunities in my job. So we're going to have to dig into that one a little bit deeper when we do the focus groups to really understand what people see as a growth trajectory. Because I think some of us have some historical ideas of what that looks like, but that may not look the same as we might have once seen. The career growth and training opportunities, a strength in that area is my principal or direct supervisor encourages continued education and professional growth. So again, remember, the growth was lower one on the last. Um, and challenging areas, my principal effectively led professional development in curriculum. So that's one of those areas on the curriculum end that we've been working with principals during principal meetings. And this year, we're actually are having them come to principal meetings on the literacy piece with their literacy or instructional coach to help support that as well, to become better at that. So we feel like we were a little bit ahead on that one, so that was good. And then in feedback and recognition, um, I feel appreciated for my work was the strongest in that area. And the, the greatest challenge is I want more recognition for high-quality work and accomplishments. So, um, it's an interesting, that's an interesting, um, needle to thread because educators in general try to be very humble, and they want recognition, but sometimes it's, it's, they're difficult. So this is a difficult one to score well on. It's not unusual because of the nature of, of the people that go into our field. And I say that with, like, just, you know, great respect. So these are two of the areas that overlap three and four, um, department awareness and department service quality. So, and you're going to hear a little bit that, that feeds into the next presentation on communication. Because one of the things that we are working on is helping our staff understand each other. We are a 22-site facility with 20 learning sites, and you think of all the different positions that we have. Someone in that teaches, like I used to, um, you know, high school science, might not have a good understanding of someone who's a special ed, uh, or, you know, like a, a cross-categorical or, or teaching special ed in, in early childhood out at Prairie Ridge. So there's, you know, so we, we understand that we are diverse enough that we have to, uh, help to, our staff bridge that lack of understanding. So, um, if we break this down a little bit and kind of see the awareness part, under academic services, our highest, or our, in terms of, I'm sorry, in terms of, um, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm going to back up just a bit real quick here. So these, in these two areas, so the highest score in department awareness is special education. So of all the departments, whether it's buildings and grounds, food service, accounting, special education is the thing that our staff is most aware of. Um, and the least aware of is academic services, the old curriculum office. So, um, there's a, there's, of all those groups that has the lowest awareness, again, an area that we recognize we have to be better at communicating. Um, our strongest quality score fell, I feel like I should be given this, like, there should be a trophy. You know, it used to be member Charlie and now Larry's group, so the custodial support. But they're neck and neck now with food service. So those two areas together are our strongest. And then human resources and payrolls are scoring the lowest in terms of perceived quality. But let's dig in a little bit into some of that, because as we look at awareness, so how aware are you of the functions of the following department? You'll see the somewhat aware, so there's, the awareness here is, is lowest in, in academic services, obviously. And there's varying, um, uh, levels of awareness. And so we're going to work, again, that's part, I'm going to talk about that in the communications presentation. Because we have a strategy on this that actually started about a year and a quarter ago. And again, things take a while to get rolling, and we're getting there. So we'll show you a sample of some of the things that are going on later. Now remember, this is not, this is, this is the awareness part, not the, uh, not the customer satisfaction. And then these are the other departments as well in terms of awareness. We probably, this is a little bit difficult because custodial support, we have separated from buildings and grounds. Obviously, this group is embedded in this group. And I believe the reason for separating this is in the past, we tend to see that, that custodial support in the building. Sometimes our staff recognizes that as possibly different. So, um, there's a little bit of probably cross-pollination of scoring between those two. In terms of scoring of departments, in terms of their service, obviously you want to keep these ones low, the, the orangish ones and the red ones, and the higher ones in the blue, so you can see the rating of the service. But again, we showed you the rating after the awareness, because sometimes a lack of understanding might affect how you score. So you can see how we rate individual departments and then.
Can I say a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I, I see early learning, and I know what that means. Is that, that's our preschool program.
Yeah.
Okay. And early childhood then, in our district, is defined as pre-K three or birth to grade three.
So the question is, would staff recognize this as a birth all the way to, to when they leave?
I'm just, I'm just, you know, the early childhood is birth to grade three.
Right.
Early learning is pre-K, so I don't know if they'd know if it's early learning, if you're, I just.
That's back to our awareness, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And you'll see the last rating of our other departments, so.
Commissioner Duex?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So principals do not have an evaluation per se. Do principals have an evaluation?
Yes.
By their staff?
Not, well, within the, within the, um, staff survey, there are questions about leadership, and I think that Jim referred to some of those questions. And so what was the highest question in school leadership?
My principal or direct supervisor trusts me to make good decisions. And then the lower one was my principal or direct supervisor holds staff members accountable.
But there's no direct evaluation?
This tool is not an evaluation tool. That would be part of the work with Dr. Hardbeck and the principals.
So Miss, if I can, if I can, uh, address how we use the staff survey with principals. What we do is we ask them to take the staff survey back to their particular schools, discuss the results, and see if there are things in their school improvement plan that can be informed by the information that they got in their staff surveys. And then we do the same thing with the family surveys and the student surveys. So they're meant to be, they're not meant to be evaluative in any way. They're meant to inform the work and the continuous improvement work that we want to see in all of our schools.
Well, well, in, at the university, we get evaluated by our students, and we get evaluated by our supervisors. So I just think it's a little strange to go, it seems like you're going around the issue just a little bit. It's not as direct as, as I would like to see, but. So, yeah. Maybe it's more of a positive thing more than I'm realizing.
Well, so let me, let me weigh in in a little bit different way. So we have our educator effectiveness tool that's mandated by the state. And that evaluation is based on a number of criteria that's related to their professionalism and their professional skills. It's also related to the work that they do with some type of professional goal that they might have, and also with a student, uh, learning objective. So that forms the basis of their evaluation. Unlike, like my evaluation, which has a 360 component to it that helps to inform your feedback for me, we don't have that embedded in the state's educator effectiveness tool. But we do look to see, are we seeing trends? You know, in terms of, um, feedback on the staff survey. We know, for example, that conflict resolution and accountability are issues that staff have identified for improvement. So we'll be talking with, you know, all of our directors, all of our principals. We addressed this in our principal retreat about accountability and, um, documentation, and making sure that we close the loop on issues that are related to performance. So it may not be individually identifiable in the way that you're talking about, but it does show a certain trends with our leadership team.
Thank you.
Back to, one thing I didn't mention yet, in terms of the scoring of one department by another. Also, a big impact on this is actually how much contact you have with that department. So for example, if I'm a custodial support member, I do need a, a technology account. I need to be able to log into a network. I need to have a piece of equipment in front of me. So I'm going to have that experience, and I might be able to be more aware and then make a more educated score. But I might not have as much impact if I'm that staff member on, with the assessment department. So I might not have as much awareness or have, have as informed of a selection in this area. So again, the part of our challenge, again, being 22 sites, is how do we help our staff understand each other? So we're going to, again, show you a little bit later, at least one effort at that, um, in terms of communications. This is that little bit on number five, because one of the pieces in the strategic plan is having streamlined communications. And so we ask our staff, um, how, what's the best way to communicate with them, district email? And that we're typically assuming those are, you know, the day-to-day emails from a department or within a building. And then the district update is, is the big one, number two. Um, and then everything else is, is pretty small after that. So you can see that, um, those two documents, or those two strategies are very highly valued by our, by our staff. We're still going to get that Twitter one up. Even this morning's tweet, that was, it's got to, it's got to move the needle on that one eventually.
That, that was good.
So next steps is, uh, like anything else, other surveys, we share that, review that with our building and district leadership teams. And so, um, and then each building will conduct a feedback session using this report. So what will happen is this report then goes out to the buildings, they, uh, we give a protocol to them. Each staff works on this. They start to give feedback on that. From, from that feedback, we really start to generate the focus group questions and how we dig deeper. And then we hand that off to K-12 Insight. And what they do is they will then finalize the protocols for the, um, focus groups. Typically, they're held in this room. I come in. We, we have about 15 people per group. We typically have had two different groups of elementary and early learning certified staff. A couple of different groups, each of 15, each of the secondary staff. We'll have a group of non-affiliated and administrative, and we'll have two groups of our hourly staff. So we'll have seven different groups come in here over the course of two days. So we'll come in, we'll welcome them, and then we leave. And then K-12 Insight does all of it, um, without us being in the room. They, they crunch all the data. We don't get to hear anything. We just get to see the big themes that you get to see when we do the report. So, um, over the next couple of months, that, those conversations in the building will be taking place to inform the, the protocol for the, um, focus groups when they come in in November. And so that's our chance to dig deeper and try to develop better understanding, because a survey can only go so far. You know, you get a survey and you say, I wonder why, I wonder about, um, that's, that's our opportunity to dig a little bit deeper. And then to really look at the refinement of the strategic plan, um, from that, so as Dr. Hardbeck was mentioning. So we look, we see these themes, and so they should be reflected in the strategic plan to make improvement. And we want to see our buildings be responsive as possible to what our, our staff are saying. So you asked questions along the way, but any other?
Any other questions, Chief Board? Commissioner Torres?
Thank you for the report. It's, it's very informative. I have, uh, two questions, or maybe three, but I'll start with the first one. In the slide, uh, about educator effectiveness, that you explained to us that, uh, staff had chosen to focus on growth. to focus on growth.
Yeah. Oh, go back, you're talking...
Yeah, the, it was before the charts.
Back further?
No, this is a different question.
Okay.
You explained to us that teachers had chosen to go the route of growth instead of data, right?
Let me answer that, okay? Let me answer that question. So, when educator effectiveness first came to Wisconsin, there was a component that was related to teacher performance and impact on student performance and student growth. And I think that was the first time that a model like that had been seen in Eau Claire. And there was quite a bit of nervousness about whether or not, what the impact of that SLO would have on a teacher's rating and performance. At that time, and I'm trying to think, it seems like it was about four years ago that educator effectiveness went in, I know it's, it's just as I was coming into the district. And we have a growth model for students. We take them where they are, and we try to see growth at the end of each year. It only made sense to me, as the superintendent, to have that same model with staff, that, you know, we know that everyone, regardless of how high performing they are, can grow in their profession, and so, we place an emphasis on the growth model. And it has become our model in terms of coaching, and all of us in, in the district, including the board and the superintendent, receive coaching to improve our effectiveness and performance, and we want to see that carry through each one of our employee groups as well.
Thank you, and I think that's, that's the way to go. But my question was about something perhaps a bit more specific, and that is, are you using any specific kind of value-added model to establish that growth? Or what is the data that you're using to establish that there has been growth or not?
So, each teacher, each principal has a student learning objective as part of their evaluation. And they have to identify a, a group of students, or a learning target, that they will be working to improve. And so, as, as Mr. Leibman and I work with principals, we're talking about, you know, what is your student learning objective for your school? How are you putting that, that growth model forward? And then, when we get the standardized testing results, that plays in and kind of informs that, as well as any formative assessment, that they had chosen to measure their, their growth. So there are a number of indicators that we use to see, one, whether a school is making growth, and two, whether individual students are making growth.
Thank you. And within that model, can you trace the growth by gender, or race, or socioeconomic status?
Yes, we can, yes, we can identify trends. And one of our goals in the strategic plan is to reduce the, the gap, the achievement gap. So, we're looking from year to year, to see what percentage of students are achieving at the proficient level, and at the advanced proficiency. And that's one of the models that we use, just one of many measures that we use.
Thank you very much.
And so, when we do the opening of school report, we will share some of those trends with you.
Okay, thank you.
And that will be in October.
Yes, looking forward to hearing that.
Good, good.
Thank you. I have one more question, if I may.
You go, that's fine.
In the collaborative cultures slide, there were two numbers that called my attention. The first one about, is about shared values, where 31% strongly agree, and 51% agree. So you have more than half of teachers that agree, being that, you know, the largest portion of the staff saying that they share values. And then, if you read that in the context of leadership, where only 37% strongly agree with the idea that my principal trusts me to make good decisions, have you thought about those two trends together? Because it seems to me that if only 31% strongly agree that staff share values, and 37% strongly agree that my principal trusts me to make good decisions, do you read something special there?
So I should...
I don't know if I'm making sense?
Yep, no, 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 you, you are, although, remember, that's, that's, 37% is over all of the questions in that area, so not just specifically about, so for example, when you said my principal or direct supervisor trusts me to make good decisions, that 37% is a representation, not just of, of that one question, but all the questions under that category.
Okay.
Right, so, it's, so we're really, when you, when you look like specifically comparing, you know, like that question to another question in the, in the shared values, you'd actually have to look at that individual breakdown of questions, and that, so that's, that's not seen here, because this is aggregated together.
Okay.
That being said, and I've said this many times when I do survey presentations, you're often gonna find some contradictions, some supporting things, where you'll hear, for example, communication's a common one, where people say, I feel like I'm getting good communication, then an area to grow on is, we need more communication. So, I feel like I'm trusted, but I feel like I'm, like, as you mentioned on the leadership, like they, you know, they trust me to make good decisions, but I'm not, I don't feel comfortable sharing my opinion. So there's, you'll sometimes see some things that contradict themselves. But again, these are relative, too. So when I, you know, these are areas that in general score relatively strong, I mean, it's, it's, when you look at the shared values collectively, you know, that you're looking at 82% collectively in that area. So something is gonna be a lower score in that, something's gonna be a higher one. It does get your attention, and like I said, that's, when you start to see contradictions like this, that's where, this almost seems like a, like the common answer, that gives us an opportunity to dig a little bit deeper. So, that idea of, you know, have, being able to be trusted, and having some level of independence and so forth, but not always wanting to feel like my input is valued, is a good area for us to dig in a little bit deeper. So we do see it, and it'll be interesting to see, because when you do focus groups, you can't do too many questions, it'll be interesting to see if that lands as one of the priorities among our staff, because the staff are gonna wrestle with this, just like you are.
My question was not to highlight a contradiction, but rather a correlation.
Yeah, right.
Because if you have 37% of staff saying that they strongly agree that my principal trusts me, and then, 31% strongly agree that we all share values, then, it seems that the works, the work needs to be, you know, directed towards, you know, increasing opportunities for people to see that they do share values.
And I think, part of where I was trying to explain a little bit is that, you have to be careful, just because that, that particular question isn't represented solely in that, in that batch.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Lookinbill?
I...
Wait a second. Commissioner Torres, are you done?
Yes.
Are you sure, okay. Commissioner Lookinbill, I just wanted to make sure, go ahead.
I just had one thing I wanted to bring up. Thank you for this report, and I'm happy, and I think that we'll continue to see positive growth, and that thankfully, in the areas for concern, we have the pleasure of delegating that good work to other people. But there's one area that I do feel is mostly the board's responsibility at this point, and it's the bullet point about how employees are questioning new salary structure, the equity piece. And I think that's really where we're getting, we're getting to the gap group, that's really where that's coming into play. And that's an issue that has been sitting on the shelf for a while, and I just want to put this out there. If it is the board's intention to address the gap group, it is as cheap as it will ever be today. Next month, it'll cost more, it'll cost more the month after that. We, as a board, I believe, have to either make the decision to fix the gap group, or make a final vote to not fix the gap group. I don't think it's fair if we're gonna leave people in limbo, and I feel we have to make that vote publicly, make the final decision, because if we don't, that bullet will continue, and we'll continue to see that theme permeating the culture of this district, if we don't simply address it one way or the other. So I just want to put that out there, that I feel that's probably the one bullet point where, that's really a decision the board is going to have to make, and, and I think we should make it soon, one way or the other, just so that it's not gonna sit collecting dust.
Commissioner Duex?
We voted on it last year, we voted not to do it, because we said we could not afford it. We are coming back to it with this next budget, but I don't think we can take it out of context, and I think it has to come with the budget. And that's, I think that's the intention, if I'm speaking correctly, that's the intention of the Budget Development Committee, to do it in context with this new budget that we're gonna look at.
Abby?
I would like to add with that, we, budget development, the recommendation and the communication to the staff has been that there would not be any changes for 1718, but that Budget Development Committee would review the budget and things that were priorities, and what can we do, and what things do we have control over in the 1718, to maybe be able to look at something for 1819. So I wouldn't say that it's, I think you're right, I agree with your comments, that it needs to be a decision and, you know, done at a board meeting level, I just know that budget development is continuing to look at that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks for connecting that, because I would've said that, too, okay. Commissioner Vu?
I, I don't know where to begin, but I think we're on the right track by looking at the staff engagement as a way to see how that focused on the last bullet in the, what's next step. And the last bullet talked about how the information will guide the school improvement plan to support the strategic plan prior to area. I, I believe that we're on the right track, but we have to be more intentional, where we align those SP in our district plan. And an example of that would be, right now, we, in, in the high-quality staff in this strategic plan, we only have one thing as indicator, and that is professional staffing. There are other indicator that we can focus on, and focus on include target, five years' target outcome. I, I don't know if we are intentional and comprehensive about integration of this kind of information with our indicators in the SP. So we, we are on the right track, but I believe we want to do more alignment.
I'm hoping, too, we'll have deeper discussions on that alignment in our work sessions with our governance model. But, point, we'll take it. Anything else, Commissioner Vu?
I'll make you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Public.
Anyone from the audience?
I was gonna call you up, but I...
Please state your name and address, please. I know, we all know where you live, Mark.
My name is Mark Goings, I live at E17450, County Road V in Augusta. Several thoughts, ultimately, we're looking at this survey and trying to find a way to have a better system. We're not, you know, and we're trying to look at it as a system level, you know, it's not about the evaluation of a, you know, many of these are, how do you feel about your principal? It's not meant to be, you know, let's work at this person, it's looking at a system. But one question, one question I would have on this, rather than looking at the numbers and saying, you know, by and large, look pretty good, and we have a few things we'd get better at, would it be private enough, and I totally get the privacy, to look at these by elementary and secondary? Because some of the things like, you know, feeling isolated, or, or trust, or feeling valued, EE conversations, that kind of stuff, it might be good when we're looking at priorities of the district to say, okay, we're, you know, we're solid here, and then you look at, you know, if it's just a couple of different percentage points, that's statistically not significant, but we might see some gaps. And that might be a way for us to zero in a little bit more on, how do we get a little bit better at what we're doing as a system? That was one thought. And Joe, yeah, I have a couple for Joe, actually. Joe, earlier on, you had one, there was, there was one, I could tell that you were concerned about people feeling isolated, and should be, be able to find a way to get help for those people. Dr. Hardbeck did a good job in mentioning, when we first started doing these surveys, people came to me and said, Mark, am I safe filling out the survey? And so, as an overall thing, we need to make sure we stay anonymous and we have that trust. But there was that one or two questions, which I think Joe heard it as a staff kind of a cry for help. Is it possible to have like a, a hot link where a person could opt in? You know, if you, if you were the definitely strongly disagree, or feeling, you know, if you're out there on the island by yourself, if you want, you could click this, and this is how the district cares about you, and we can start, we can set you up with a person. That's just a thought, it would allow, but they'd have, there'd be an opt-in, not just there. And the other thing, I don't know if we have for the, if we could do the data or not, and Joe had also asked about, as far as the glitch group and the compensation part, can we use this data and look at it as, okay, people who had been here for zero to 10 years, here's what, here's what this group said for compensation questions, and then for the 10 to 20 years, see that? Because if the board is looking at deciding they want to do something, not do something, you might be able to say, okay, these people that had this largest, you know, high percentage of their career was frozen, and you look at how their status that I can show it up, you can start to have some of the data possibly to do that. So with that, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Dr. Hardbeck wants to respond. You can stay.
And usually, we don't respond, but I think some of the things you brought up are kind of easy answers. And one, you know, I do want to protect the confidentiality of the employees, so that they can be frank and candid in their responses, particularly in their written responses, which we don't see. But, you know, when you talk about disaggregating it by elementary, maybe middle, secondary, maybe by support staff or administrators, I think we do that when we have the focus groups, because people can, are representative of their groups, and they can kind of like talk about the group think in those groups, and give some very specific feedback to the facilitators, which then comes back to us. So I think that's one way of doing that. The, we don't want to, like, pre-plug with, you know, identifiable information for surveys, or we don't want to ask, to ask staff to self-identify, like whether I'm a third-grade teacher, you know, or a fifth-grade teacher, because, you know, they may feel that that will come back to them, and be, and they will be identifiable. So, although we don't have a mechanism within the survey, I think we do have a mechanism through the focus groups, to get that, to get that group feedback, that's specific to that group. Then the second thing that you talked about was the isolation piece, and finding out whether or not we could have a hot link. I think we could talk to K-12 about that, if someone weighs in on that specific question about, and letting them know that because they've answered in this way, these resources are available to you. And then, your last piece about the disaggregation, we can talk to K-12 about how we might do that, and whether that could be done in terms of that one question.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other... Any other, any other people from the audience like to weigh in? Seeing none, it takes us to our next report or update, Communications Committee update. Is that you too, Jim?
That is.
Okay. I'm so excited for this one.
So we are coming to you every six months, just to check in on how things are going in terms of communications. This is one of the things we talked about that generated out of this, both out of the staff engagement survey in the past, and also from the, from the strategic plan. So obviously, this is, really focuses on that last piece, partnerships with families and communities, and really about having a well-aligned strategic communication plan. The district does have a communication plan, we shared that at the last meeting, and that's going to be something we'll be working on revising. Can't keep revising this every six months, but it will be an annual process, and we're going to begin that actually at our next meeting. So again, this is a little bit, some of these are a little repeats, if you go back a few months when we presented, some of these are repeats, we just want to get you back around thinking in terms of why that group exists. And again, that's around that first bullet under priority number five. And really, the purpose of the committee is to develop that, that communication system. We don't have a communications office. Some districts do, but we bring together people that have, like, a related role in what's go over, in communications, and we'll go over that team in just a moment. And then having that consistent communications between families, community members, and staff. And this is just a challenge, no matter what organization you're in, right, to have good, clear communications. And finally, that workflow is to make sure that we, we have processes in place. So, the group is appearing as, again, as you see, this is a group of people that has become a very mixed group of people across the district, represents the district office, but these, we work then with principals and teachers and getting feedback, and other staff in the district, to get feedback on our work, to make sure we're not working in a vacuum, if you will. We shared this graphic with you last, last time as well. So this group does not work in pure isolation, as I mentioned, they, they bring recommendations to the executive team, and the executive team may bring something to the board, may ask input from the building leadership, and based on feedback, this continues, this looping process will continue. So the group is, is not authorized to make decisions, but instead makes recommendations or responds to requests for them. So let's go through the type of work that they've been doing since we reported to you last. And a lot of the work has been about developing consistent branding, again, the Eau Claire Area School District brand, and really, developing, if you notice, the template has been the same for all of our presentations. So we have a common template, and that's, you know, so when you see this come up, you should feel like, okay, it's a district presentation. We've also rebranded the blue. This may not seem like a big deal to you, but blue has been a big, hot topic conversation. And our blue, actually, if people are noticing, it looks a little bit lighter, a little bit brighter than the last blue, so we've actually, and now you're starting to see that blue is going to be standardized across our other materials as well. And if you want to know about CMYK or RGB codes, I can really have a long conversation with you and bore you to death, about as much as my solar eclipse glasses, but we won't do that tonight. So anyway, but that's been a lot of the work in the past, is developing some of those templates. We also did an RFP for a branding manual, we talked about this earlier, having that manual for what is the district brand, and then having a graphic designer work with us on. So we found that we were going out and having different people do graphics work, so we really wanted to get a company at least started to do some significant work and work with us on a longer-term basis. So that's Green Door Graphics, and they're starting their work with us this month. We also did an RFP for video production, so we recognize that one way to communicate effectively with our staff is through videos. And boy, videos look so easy when they're short and simple, but they take a lot of work to get done well. And so we did that RFP, and Stokes &amp; Herzog is the company that we're working with right now, won the, they won the RFP process for, to create a series of three videos, and you're going to see version one tonight. And then finally, our photo contract, and this has been going on for four years now, we're going to be starting our fifth year, and those photos that you've seen, and one of the most powerful things that we've done in the district, that, of course, is Jeff Thompson Photography, and Jeff's done a wonderful job over the last several years. And then we also are working on trying to ensure that we have a streamlined approach for having staff photos. So, you know, when emails come out, and, you know, like, they, people have different photos, really having a staff photo be part of that process. We'll give staff an opportunity to opt out and just go with the generic Microsoft Office initials, or having a consistent staff photo, not just these photos, these ones are a little less, you know, like, the ones we want to actually show up in our professional communications. So some other work we've done is also creating some new processes. The committee now has a standard meeting time. We meet on Mondays, ten to noon, on non-board meeting days. So of course, policy and governance meets on board meeting days, this committee meets on alternate days, and of course, that really helps, you know, Patty and me and some others be able to make both different meetings. So we actually have a regular schedule, which has helped a lot. We actually don't let things build up and try to find times to make it work, people knew that at the start of the school year. We did site-level meetings with principal, building secretary, and partnership coordinator, so Terry Piper-Thompson and myself went out, and we, based on the work we had done, we then did site-level, got a lot of feedback. It was a really good session, so it was really, it was, you know, twenty different communicator meetings. And we're going to be doing that again this year, and it gives us a chance to really take the work that we are doing in committee and making sure, and see how that applies to the billing level, develop some sense of relationships, so they feel like they can communicate more effectively with us. They're very candid meetings, and sometimes we hear things that we didn't expect to hear. And anyway, so they've been a really good, good process, we enjoy getting out to do that. We've also embedded this into the onboarding process, so part of our branding and part of that communication is now embedded in the onboarding. We've developed modules, Canvas modules, which is our online learning platform, to help educate our new staff as they come in. And then finally, the public events, and so the, I got a list of them here, so these are events that we are trying to put, so if you went to Dabble Days last week, which was down at the library, we now have a district, I think it's about a ten-by-ten tent, has the district logo on it, HR has, we've been, we've been borrowing and sharing the, they got that tablecloth. So we really, when we show up, it's, it looks like the district, you know, we've, it's a really nice job. So like, for example, Business Expo, the Family Day, we didn't have the tent yet for that, we kind of, I think that was the breaking point, where some people didn't have enough sunscreen to battle the, it was really warm, right? So Family Day, we were out there, St. Paul Saints, UW Eau Claire, that one's coming up in a, in a couple of weeks. Dabble Days, I mentioned, the Fall Festival, we're planning to have presence there as well. Age of Opportunity, Job and Volunteer Fair for fifty-five years and older, the Community Action Day booths at UW Eau Claire twice a year, and then a different outreach visits in the Boundary Listening Sessions. So we're really trying to make sure that our presence, that brand of the district is very aware to those around us, that we interact with. We've also been creating some new tools. So the district update, and you all get the weekly district update as well, the district update is moving to a new platform. It was a static PDF in the past, it is now going to be a dynamic, you'll still get the Friday email that Patty sends out, I mean, I'll have the link to it, and it's actually to a SharePoint site, it's going to be really nice, because, because of this, you'll be able to do searches across, so if you say, when you get in there and you say, boy, I could swear there was something about insurance, you type in insurance, you'll get all the different hits on insurance. So it'll do a nice ability for us to give, give staff, be able to search. And also, if we make a mistake, which periodically, sometimes some of us give Patty the wrong information, and then we have to wait a whole week to fix it, we can fix it on the fly, and it's, it's all live, so, that's not me, of course, right Patty? So the SharePoint Internet Develop, Intranet is part of that, so if you go to our district webpage, you'll notice that, it used to say staff only, now it says staff Intranet. And in a nutshell, as I've shown people how to use this, it's really like shopping on Amazon.com. You go into our Intranet, you type a keyword in, you get hits, and you can filter and do all sorts of pretty cool stuff with it. And we're really trying to make that experience, I mean, there's a reason why Amazon.com works, right? It has, and it uses that same sort of technology, and, and so, trying to make it so people can find stuff better. And that looks so easy when it works, but boy, there's been a team that has just really worked hard to make this happen. Boundary Website, Change Website has been part of that work over the past few months. And finally, the ADA website work, I'm not sure how many of you are, but there's a requirement to be ADA compliant on our websites, so that people that have disabilities have access to all the content on our webpages, and there are different rules about, for example, when you cursor over a picture, what should happen, shouldn't happen. So we've been really reforming our, and updating our websites to be compliant in that area as well. So this has been a large undertaking, involved all of our secretaries that manage websites over the past few months. So some next steps, some new things we're going to be doing is updating the district communications plan over the next few months, and we'll bring you that version in February. We're about ready to do that, we're going to complete that brand manual, it's going to be pretty exciting, so what is the district brand? Rolling out some new videos and new logos, so part of the Green Door Graphics piece was to really improve about four different logos, so we've got those in the hopper, and then I'll show you again in a moment the first version of the video piece. And then develop our next online course for branding, so we'll roll that out to principals at their meeting, either in December or January, and then follow up that with our one-on-one meetings to each of the buildings over the spring. And then we will continue to reinforce those trainings at the site, develop our tools like SharePoint that we've been working on, review and revise our communication-related policies. So part of the work actually ended up at Policy and Governance, some of this has ended up there, and there's a few pieces that are waiting for the brand manual, so that's, some of the stuff can't happen until this is done. And then finally, that branding reinforcement, so making sure that, again, at all of our meetings, we continue to use that, the brand as much as possible, to make sure that we recognize that, that, you know, we have a brand, so. So let's show, now, by the way, this is, the rollout, so we're showing this on, on live, you know, streaming right now, the rollout for our first video is going to be next week at the staff meeting, all-staff meeting on Monday afternoon. So just to give you a little flavor for what that looks like, and you're going to have to partner with me as I type in a web address, I didn't want to have to pull up my email. See if I nailed it. All right, I did.
The Eau Claire School.
Whoa, we've got to back that up just a moment here. So let's get you from the start. So it's a thirty-second spot. One of the things that you'll recognize in any, any video that you do, you can't do everything, right? I mean, we've seen some examples where people try to do too much. So the first one is simply about the whole child, and what the district, you know, about the district in general. And there's a, the next one that's in the hopper is actually on academic and career planning. And that one is, the work has already begun on that one, and then we'll be doing another follow-up. This is a thirty-second piece, the academic career planning one's a little bit longer. And then we'll be doing another follow-up to this one after that. So that'll be the first three videos that we're going to be doing, so here goes, here goes the alpha, I'm not sure if this is alpha or beta, but here we roll.
The Eau Claire School District, educating the whole child. The whole child. Healthy. Safe. Engaged. Supported. The Eau Claire Area School District, where knowledge and inspiration meet to create the future.
So one of the things for that video, by the way, we, this was a summer project, so some of the, it's a little heavy on our summer school activities, so we're going to be, as the year goes on, we're going to be exchanging that with some video from, from our regular academic year calendar work, but version 1.0, so that's, we're tweaking that and trying to get a sense of helping people understand the Eau Claire District brand, and obviously, we'll be following this up with other work soon, so, all right.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Do we have any questions from the board? Commissioner Lu?
My only question is just about the marketing students at the high schools, and if there's a plan in this coming year to engage them, and getting some ideas and...
Yeah, we've, so we've actually talked about, there's a, there's a variety of different folks that we've talked about trying to engage students in our work. We actually haven't had a conversation with the marketing yet, but part of what we want to do, we think that this is a good opportunity for us, not yet, one of those pieces, we got to get our, we're a bit novices ourselves on the marketing end, and once we, but I, but that is definitely an avenue we can engage students in.
I just have a question.
Sure.
It's a thirty-second video.
Yeah.
Will that video be able to be played on our scoreboards?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Good.
And if we want, possibly even on a TV station, it just happens to be, it's in that little box, right?
Thank you very much. Anyone from the audience?
I don't know if you caught that, by the way, in the last thing, it says enroll today, so...
I see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't, don't forget the, oops, yeah.
If anyone else has TV ads about it.
That's right.
Yeah, we threw that right at the end, oh, that was too far.
The future.
As a board, I want to thank all the committee people that have worked on the committee, that's hard work, thank you. So then that brings us to our discussion and possible first reading of Policy 445, Law Enforcement Officials and School Resource Officers. We've worked on this in P&amp;G and would like to do the first reading, okay? Joe, do you want to speak to the, speak to it at all?
Well, I, it was brought to us by Tim Livam, just in need of some updates, and I know that once we've updated the policy, they'll also go to the, with the Police Department to work through the MOU with them, just to make sure that it's aligned. And I know that the Police Department is, Ben Frederick, he met with him, and that they are in support of what we're doing here, so.
So first reading, we sometimes just start with one person and read a couple paragraphs and read, go to the next. So Joe, you want to start, I'll come in, then Catherine, and Eric, and then Charles, if there's some on the end there.
Law enforcement officials in the schools. The district recognizes that cooperation with law enforcement agencies is necessary for the protection of students and employees from maintaining a safe environment in district schools, and for safeguarding all school property. At the same time, the district recognizes its responsibility to protect the educational process, and to provide for the concerns of parents and guardians regarding the welfare of their children. Law enforcement officials may be called to the school when laws may have been violated, and in situations that threaten the safety of students, employees, and/or the public. In these situations, law enforcement officials may interview students in accordance with board policy and established procedures. Law enforcement-initiated student interviews that are not school-related shall not be conducted on school premises during the school day, except in emergencies or as specifically required by law.
School Resource Officers in the schools. The school resource officer, SRO, serves to provide information and supports to district staff, students, and families. While authorized to act independent of school district policy in response to a significant criminal act or immediate threat, the SRO is not to be the primary responder or investigator of discipline investigations or behavioral issues that arise on a school campus or at a school event. An SRO must contact a district official in order to obtain access to student records, which are not law enforcement until, unit rec, let me, let me start again, I think it, a SRO must contact a district official in order to obtain access to student records, which are not law enforcement unit records maintained by the school. A SRO who seeks to address, to access pupil records aside from their own law enforcement unit records must certify in writing to a school official that any information sought is for limited designated purposes. It is the role of the school administration to investigate school-based issues and to decide if a formal referral to the SRO is warranted. SROs shall not act as a school disciplinarian. Disciplining students is a responsibility of school personnel in accordance with Policy 447, student discipline and positive behavior interventions. If a school administrator determines that a crime may have been committed, SROs may be consultant, consulted. All student interviews with law enforcement officials and/or SROs conducted on school premises during the school day shall receive prior approval of the building principal or designee. All students shall be accompanied by the principal or designee for the duration of the interview. If a request for a student interview is denied, the building principal or designee shall state the reason for such denial. Law enforcement officials and/or SROs may appeal decisions made by the building principal or designee to the superintendent.
Prior to any interview of a student who is the victim, witness, or complainant, except in case of an abuse situation, the principal shall contact the parent or parents or legal guardians unless otherwise instructed by the officer in charge. If the officer so requests, it shall become the officer's responsibility to communicate with the parents or guardians. Unless otherwise requested by the officer, the principal or his or her designee... the principal or his or her designee shall sit in on the interview for the express purpose of providing in loco parentis support for the student. Students shall not be interviewed without the notification of parents or guardians except in the case of serious emergency where the parent or a relative is the focus of the investigation or as otherwise provided by law. Reasonable attempts shall be made to allow for parents or guardians to be present for any such interview except in the case of serious emergency where the parent or a relative is the focus of the investigation or as otherwise provided by law.
Interviews of students in schools related to abuse and neglect. Any contact with parents or guardians in an abuse or neglect case shall be made by human services or law enforcement officials. This policy is not applicable to situations related to allegations of child abuse and neglect.
Allegations of misconduct by law enforcement officials and SROs. Any allegation of misconduct by law enforcement officials and SROs shall be handled in accordance with the memorandum of understanding between ESASD and the City of Eau Claire.
Thank you, board. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Duex.
Sorry, I had that on. It's not clear to me what an SRO's job is if they don't intercede at all. And it has to be with the principal interceding with a student. Is that, am I mistaking that role? I don't understand what their job is.
Marian.
So the SRO is there to provide and to help maintain a safe campus. If there are threats to the campus or to students, the SRO is there to respond. If laws are broken on the campus, the SRO is there to respond. But the SRO is also a support for students in terms of that relationship building, understanding the role of law enforcement, helping the principal to maintain a safe campus. And so in instances where inappropriate behavior takes place on the campus or in the classroom, the first order of business is for an administrator to investigate that and to determine if possible laws have been broken. If they have been broken, then they are referred immediately to the SRO.
Oh, okay. It, it just seems like maybe we should have a statement that's positive in terms of what they actually, their job is, rather than saying, because almost every paragraph tells them what they should not do. What should they do? I just felt like it wasn't quite clear enough.
We can refer it back to policy and governance if we could maybe provide a definition or a semi-job description of what an SRO does and make it maybe be part of the policy? We can take it back for discussion?
It's a good idea.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, that's why we read them. Commissioner Vu.
I just want clarifications. So when we do this policy, we take into account officer doing duties such as child protective services-related work? We follow protocol of officer in buildings because of CPS.
I, there's a connection there, but I don't know if our SRO would be the person doing the investigation once human services was involved.
Usually, when there is a report from a private agency or public agency, a police officer would accompany a social worker into a building. And this policy mentioned nothing of that nature. I wonder if it's broad enough in here to include CPS work? Or does it need to be separate policy somewhere else?
CPS did come up when we talked about it in P&amp;G. And so that's why we did include the segment in there, right?
That's where we mentioned human services. And that's a separate policy about child abuse and neglect, where we include all about DHS and CPS.
It's cross-referenced on the bottom, Patty? Can you cross-reference that, the, on the bottom? Yeah, but we have abuse and neglect too. So maybe we've, we need to put that cross-reference on there.
So I have add cross-reference to abuse and neglect and add a brief job description at the top.
Yep.
I'm sure the police department already has. They can just send it.
Okay, thank you. Any input from the audience? Any else from the board? No? Seeing none, do we have any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, can I have a motion for adjournment? But stay because we have to schedule agenda setting. Can I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So move.
So move from Commissioner Vu, seconded by Commissioner Duex. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. We are adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.